I'm me, that's it.
Sorry, sorry.
It was a moment. All of us in the inter직원们, we stand for the...
Hi, congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Mrs. Thompson, present. Mrs. Rosenau, present. Mrs. McHugh, present. Mrs. Bobzian, present. Mrs. Drewick? Mrs. DeBos, Mr. DeBos, sorry, I was on the board. Mrs. On the board.
She's naked.
Oh, Glenn.
He's a hat mess.
Thank you. Alright, we have, are there any changes to the agenda? Are there any need of motion?
I move to adopt the agenda for the May 19th, 2025 regular meeting as presented.
Support.
It is moved by Mrs. Rosenau, supported by Mrs. McHugh, to approve the agenda for May 19th as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All the same, sign. Consent agenda.
Under the consent agenda, we are approving the minutes from the regular meeting of April 28th, 2025 as presented. We are also approving general fund bills in the amount of $1746.24 AP payroll checks in the amount of $6,968.99, a total of $107,715.23 with the checks number 70462 through 70507, and the ACH transfers in the amount of $264,776.28, for a total of $372,491.51, and no checks voided, and additional bills in the amount of $20,023.15 with check number 70508 through 70510, and no CPG fund bill. Personal resignation of Jesse Zekowski, junior senior high school principal, current APG bus driver. I move to approve the item on the agenda as presented.
Support. It's moved by Mrs. Bobzian, supported by Mrs. Rosenau, to approve the items that we need consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing them, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, in the same. Motion, carry. Okay, board recognition and celebration.
Where are the dancing boys? Are they? I love the creation.
In fact, they're very creative.
Oh my gosh.
I was gonna say, I see two.
In fact, they're very creative.
I see two.
I'm so sorry to disappoint you, Lori, it's just I...
It says 30 years, and this is the end of my 30th birthday, and then three years, so it's a 34th.
Yep, yes, Laura always says just 30 plus, because she, for that reason, does not want to insult anyone. But we know, it's just unbelievable. And honestly, we've not done this before, but I was just thinking that likely every last person at this table has something that they could share. I'm gonna read, because I didn't want to forget anything, but Lori, you know, when I was a teacher here, I had a classroom right next to yours for a minute, and the best, well, I'll get to this in a minute, but the best part about Lori is, you have never lost your love for children.
Yeah.
You've been aggravated at times, as we all are, but it is so crucial, when you are in this field, that you always keep your moral compass on the whole reason why we're here, which is our children. And I've always respected, admired, and loved that about you.
Oh.
I really, truly have. So now, onto the...
And so we haven't damaged anybody?
Lori, you have not. And, you know, I always tell my kids, everybody, like my own personal children, I've made mistakes with you, but mistakes and things like that have modeled for you on how to respond when you've made a mistake, because you'll make fun of your children. So, and I know you to be, I could just speak forever, I just know you to be this loving human, who is never above recognizing when a mistake has been made. And you've just always, you're just wonderful. So, here we are. Congratulations, Lori, on your well-deserved retirement. After more than 30 years of dedicated service to our district, it's hard to put into words the impact that you have had on generations of students, families, and colleagues. This part's not written, but, you know, we've seen people come, go, come back, I'm in that category, and who and what has been the constant, Lori? You. Your patience, kindness, and unwavering care have touched so many lives, whether it's in the classroom, on the track and field, your student-first approach, your deep love for kids has always shown through. You, more than a teacher, you are a mentor, you are a role model, you are a coach, you are a steady presence, who always kept what is best for students in the district at heart. And on that note, you have been that presence for students who have nobody but you. Thank you for your tireless commitment, your district-focused, student-focused mindset, and for your heart. From your lessons to your encouragement, your legacy will live on. You will be deeply missed, but your influence will never be forgotten, Lori. And I hope you know how appreciated you are. You're an absolute blessing.
I'd say, in 1994, actually, in 1990, when I came in Memphis, the first time I did, and it was six, very classroom, and very classroom, I ended up being there, I met Nancy. And Nancy was an amazing special ed teacher, and just like control, and somebody I couldn't hold. And she had faith in me, and gave me that shot. And, oh, then she gave this card, and she always wrote when I got hired, because she, she put it in. She took a risk, because there are other people, and she must have seen something that I could be. And I want, I've always looked up to you, and it's kind of ironic that now you're the fourth president. And I just think, when you retired, I was like, wow. But she wrote, and she sent me flowers the first day I came in, "Good things always come to those who wait. Welcome aboard."
Aw, and you got that? Oh my goodness.
I kept it, and I look at that, and it helps me remind, and I've been honored to work with so many people, with fantastic bus drivers, and board members, and coworkers, and just colleagues, and just parents, and wonderful people, and seeing these kids move on and come back. And one of them is my electrician, one of them is a person, and I always pray that I did leave a legacy of positivity, and that they know that they're not alone, and this is just one small piece, and to move on to the big deal, and have a positive, good person. But I want to thank Nancy, because if you had, I was very green, and if I had not seen her teaching, and how she was working, and not had that influence, I don't know if I would have been here. But I believe God put me here, and there was a reason I had work to do, and it is time, in the words of Rafiki from Lion King, "It is time."
Well, you deserve the very best. Thank you. And no board member can take that.
Lori, the amazing things that you have done, and the children that you've helped, but you're only gonna be just said for orbiting from. It gets better. And then you come back.
The gene box, the gene box, you know. Your beautiful girls, and your beautiful... And your kiddos, and you was a kiddo that I... And your kiddos.
Crazy, Lori, thank you so much.
No, it's just amazing, wonderful people here. Wonderful. Oh, yeah, I'll be working on that. I'll have it ready.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I mean, I can't talk about Mr. Ashen though, but I just want to, and follow next, very, very hard. So I want to let the board know, if you get our Memphis seniors, quiet, receive Division 1 grade United States, as well as the junior, junior high band, also receiving Division 1, which is amazing, but more importantly, with Josh Ash and his program, I know we've all talked about it, and we've recognized it, but some of the little things that them and us, like trying to coordinate with, cheerleading's a big one, but soccer and all the sports, just to make the program happen, and a lot of these choir kids, they don't even practice at the same time, by themselves, and just to pull it all together and do that, I think it's just really amazing. Cheer that with the board. And also, I had to, like, read a quick note from our exchange unit, Leo. He went home this morning. He's in... Like a child, great. Andrew, I don't know, and they're going to Niagara Falls, I don't know, and then New York City for a few days, and then flying home Saturday, I hope. So, like him, it's real short and sweet, but I just wanted to say, I want to sincerely thank you for the opportunity. This experience has been truly meaningful, and has helped me grow academically and personally. Thank you for all your support, sincerely, Leo Polis.
And then you have to recognize yourself, underway, for what you do for foreign students, because there aren't very many families that continue to do that, and you have offered your home and your love to these kids, and offered them something that is just unbelievable. So, you need to recognize you too, and the benefit, and it's an honor for you.
Well, we're gonna continue, because just two days ago, we agreed, girl, break.
She hates her later. No, it's basketball.
That's the sideline here, you gotta save her from basketball.
But the other part...
We've done both before.
I know, I know, yeah.
I was able to attend the fourth, fifth, sixth grades, junior high concert the other night, too. It was just amazing, the progress that those kids have made during the course of one year with them. And so I think that that is something that we need to look at, and it's great, thanks. Anybody else for award celebration?
Graduation was lovely, I think it went well, and I could not believe how packed it was. For 16 some kids, there were so many people there to celebrate with.
And the air conditioning worked.
And it was a nice place.
Alright, so student reps are not here, so we have administrative reports. Alright, I'd like to start.
I'll start, I'll be back at the elementary school. I'm just really excited for our students, because this week, they do leave for camp, and I understand that there'll be a lot of nice pictures posted soon. Now, I don't have Facebook, I'm looking forward to seeing them from other people. We are 100% done with the staff testing, and I can't publicly share the information yet, but wow. Wow, 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 so we're gonna be good there. NWEA testing, we're almost all done, and our improvement and achievement data on that, as well as, is astounding. And so, again, just so proud of the staff and the students that were working tirelessly at that elementary school. It's just wonderful. The like radio was canceled due to weather, and is uncertain at this time if there's gonna be a reschedule date. And that's just because all of the end-of-the-year walking trips to Arctic Green, and other field trips, and ceremonies, and field days, so we're unsure at this point. And then, I thought you might be interested to know about the events that are scheduled for Field Day, and it's going to be quite the day, as it always is. Our APG does a wonderful job with that. And then also, I just wanted to point out that, in speaking with Nancy, she has agreed to facilitate, and we will be bringing back the 5K for the 25-26 school year, which is a wonderful thing.
Lori's gonna help, too.
Lori, really? Did she just get some voluntold?
So, I know that, I've talked about seven staff numbers, and they are so, so happy to hear that, so. Thank you, Nancy, for that.
I'd love to bring them back.
You gotta get staff that's willing to go overnight.
I know.
That's not gonna happen right now.
Junior?
Alright, on the April 29th, we celebrated in honor of Gillian Sokowski. She was the recipient at Memphis High School for the McComall Academic Awards Ceremony. It was very nice, and it was a great honor, Miss Coppins joined myself there at the ceremony. On the 29th as well, we had a college, our Career and College Trades Fair. I've included some pictures below, great turnout, thank you to all the volunteers, students, and opportunity to get some college information, and also some career trades, exploration, and meet with some individuals and companies in the area. NWEA testing is currently underway, starting tomorrow. We'll be doing our math, sixth grade through 11th grade tomorrow, and then reading on Wednesday, and reading science next Tuesday. We have one more AP test remaining, and that will be taken care of this Friday. And then, the 16th, we had honors convocation. I thought that went very well, and we awarded an impressive $32,000 compared to $23,000 last year. And, I mean, we've already made it, but graduation on Sunday yesterday was absolutely spectacular, in my opinion. I thought it went very well. Mr. Ash and the band in choir did a fantastic job, and the weather cooperated very well, so I was happy with that. June 3rd, we will have junior high field day here in the back, and Miss Bobzian, I'm gonna be contacting you as soon as possible. But other than that, that's what I have for today.
Business director is in here, Adam Hines, done a good job of summarizing details with the budget, and the state, the uncertainty, and the fact that they probably won't have it by July 1st. And as always, if you have any questions, he is more than willing to have you take the calls and give the information to you. And Jamel?
So, I failed to put a report in this month, so apologies on that. I just have a few things, though there hasn't been much big at this point. We are preparing for districts, hosting both of them. Angie and I have been meeting almost every day just to check off our list, and, you know, moving the porta-potties closer, getting the snow fence, everything that we need to do for that, so we're right along the way. Our spring seasons have done really well, all the teams are kind of right in the middle of the road. I think softball's competing for second, or second and third in the division, and baseball's right in the middle there. Track had one runner qualify for two events for states, so well done, coach and the team for that. So we'll be staying tuned for all the excitement, I know golf is off for regionals here real soon. Fall is pretty much all scheduled for next year, officials and everything, so hopefully that is set in stone then. And then just something interesting to share, at our last AD meeting, we had taken the group of students to the sportsmanship summit, and as part of that sportsmanship summit, they had asked the student groups to come together and list out the schools that you love playing at. Meaning, you know, they have great facilities, or their fans are really nice, or the sportsmanship by the team. And then they also asked the students to collaborate on the teams that they least like playing against. We didn't make either list, which we got some work to work on. However, I was very happy that we didn't make the list that everybody likes to play there. So, that was a really good thing. They did share, the commissioner did share with us, who didn't, like, who was on those lists, and just challenged everybody to strive to be on the, hey, we like playing there, they have great fans, they have great facilities, and everything like that. So, that was just really interesting, being new to the league, and kind of worrying, and I think everybody knows who everybody doesn't like to play. So, but from the kids, it was interesting to see, so.
Did they like, did they tell you that you know what things were that the kids liked about different schools?
They, it was based on like facilities, sportsmanship by the team, and then their fans. Those were the three things that they were asked, and then they had to come together as a school, and rank, you know, like, list the top three schools, or list the three that, you know, and you had to put your name on it. So like Memphis had to put Memphis, and then they turned in their paper. So, they didn't really tell us exactly why you were on the list. The positive list, the, you know, we like playing there, they did share so-and-so had the best facilities, or so-and-so had the best fans, but they didn't say with the negative. So, but that was just kind of a neat little tidbit, to know that, you know, we've got some things to work on, but we're right in there with the rest of the crowds, in most part.
May I add one real quick thing? For this Thursday, we have three that need to go to the championships for Bluewater. It's at Marysville on Thursday, so one to state, one's going to states, and another missed it by, oh my gosh, one, three tenths of a second, but I've got three going to Bluewater Championship Summit, so I forgot. I forgot to put that.
Alright, then there, the maintenance director has his report in here, as we've all seen, and so, really good. And then the bond harvest updates, are you doing anything on that at all? It's very self-explanatory.
Yeah, at least, I'm just really excited about the biggest things we've got. Moving, the two really big things right now are the fire panels at both buildings. Those are around $600,000 each, and desperately needed. And then the HVAC control systems in both building, also incredibly expensive, and also muted. But we have three opening did come in under budget, which was wonderful, because in total, we had like 55 bidders, which Dan had said they've not seen that in a very long time. So, yeah, we're looking good.
Very good. So, anything that you want to say on the three Adams budgets, other than what's in here from Leo again, and that he's gonna have his year budget at the June meeting?
Yeah, we have at June, the state, the state, the senate, and the governor all came in with pretty substantial per pupil increases. So, we always take the conservative approach, and plan for, like last year, we planned for a zero raise, or zero increase, and we have it at 220. So this year, being that they're all at around the 400 mark, he wants to plan for 200, $200 increase.
And then be pleasantly surprised.
And then be pleasantly surprised. But also, I told him, you know, I have a plan, typically in the past, we have budgeted for a loss of 10 students. And so, but last year, because we always look at trends, and there usually is a catch-up year, so. We had several years in a row where we stayed the same, or went up a little. So, we looked at trends, and he had budgeted for 30 down for this school year, and we were exactly 30 down. We did get the benefit of the state, the reason why we're not in bad shape because of that, is because the state has a stabilization payment, so they gave the district $180,000 because we lost 30 students. So, that helped out a lot. There is talk that that stabilization payment will be in effect again for the next school year, but we are not counting on that in any of our budgets. And because some of the three that have come in have eliminated 31A, one or two of them, I can't remember which two, eliminated 31A funding, which is our at-risk funding. So we are also very conservatively planning on that structure, because that's like, would be paid, we do SSA from 31A. It's a lot. So, we are gonna be very conservative with that, because some of the thought process is, they want to, instead of doing these categoricals, oh, this money's gonna be earmarked for this, that's one of the reasons why they're talking about that $400 per pupil increase, is to then let it just go to general, and the school can decide. But we get a huge chunk of change from, I believe it's around $400,000 for 31A funding. So 200 a student with that, you could say.
Well, 31A also can be used across the board. Where all the rest from our earmark to just be elementary, or just be, you know, this, or whatever. So it's, it's a shame, because 31A has been very successfully used in many districts for a long time, that why they're giving them that money.
I was very surprised, if in the after-year school conferences are funded from, your AAB, your APs are funded from, so, yeah.
Alright, thank you. And once again, any questions, Adam's always willing to take a phone call. Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay, new true law notes, or true law notes from April 2025? Any discussion, anybody wants to bring up on those? Hearing them, action items, Art Mallon Jim Revers.
He was supposed to come and talk, and I just realized that he's not here. No, he didn't, no, he was gonna come and speak to it.
So we table it till next Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, Michigan High School Resolution 25-26? No, MHSA resolution 25-26?
That's just a resolution stating where we are participating.
Yep, yeah.
I have a question. Just because I know like with MHSA, and then like the off-season, the four-person rule, it doesn't really include sixth graders, and I see like on here, we have that seven through 12, but then we have the six, seven, eight for the grade level for membership. Is it still not, they're still not including the sixth graders? So that's not like us saying that we're not including the sixth graders for MHSA, that's kind of their thing, right?
The way I read is, if you're saying that you're including your sixth graders, they fall under your rules.
We have it.
Okay, as it says, yes, we're...
Because in some of the rulebooks, it specifically says seventh grader of that, so that's why I was kind of wondering where the sixth graders kind of fall in that four-person rule.
If they would fall under, if you're... See, junior high is very different.
Yeah, because I know some of them like softball, they don't fall under MHSA.
Can I read with the little paragraphs, like I just opened it up?
Okay.
So I think this might be helpful, it's like on the actual resolution, you have to check the box that says, yes or no, and then wording is, and so on this resolution, it's checked yes. So, six, yes, sixth graders will be participating in at least one sport with seventh and eighth graders. If yes, and not housed in the same building, add the name of the building that houses the sixth graders, which is, which is...
Could be the fourth grade.
So Memphis Elementary School is added. I don't know if that helps, does that answer your question, any of them?
Yeah, I mean, I think so, I think if you're saying they fall under it, I was just kind of wondering where they kind of fell into that. I just seen the print on here, so I was like, why it wasn't sixth to 12, is that a sound grade fall?
So is this still an exception for football, though?
Football, we don't, for football, each, each, our insurance coverer has made that very clear, that it's not. Not a go.
So volleyball, cheer, wrestling, basketball?
Yeah.
Softball, baseball?
The new league for youth football, that's gonna be six grades down.
Yeah.
So, so they go like grade level, so we fit, the sixth grade will play on a team, third, fourth, and first, and second.
Yeah.
So, that would be the option, this is yours.
So there's nothing you really have to do, you just have to get it signed and everything? There's no, there's no motion or anything for this person?
Well...
She doesn't...
There is not, there is no motion.
Okay.
But it is under, so I think to be safe, we should have a motion.
That's what I, that's already going to have something, so, okay. Do you want to read it? They gave a proposed resolution right here.
Yeah, that's what we have.
It's, it's right here.
I think as presented, we'll work, we'll be able to do this as presented.
I move to approve the MHSA SS A resolution for 2025, 2026, as presented.
It is MHSA A.
M-H-S-A-A.
Michigan.
Yes, MHSA A. Yeah.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Close order.
We have a motion by Mr. Bobbs, supported by Mr. Buss, to approve the MHSA A resolution 2526, as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please sign. Motion carried. Okay, next we have the information of two candidates, or we were given the information of two candidates for St. Clair County Board of RISA, Board of Education, and we had Michael McCartan and Jessica Tati. And we need a motion to support designate, to serve on the board for election. And Karen has been in the past, and then Marty was the alternative. And if we want to go with the motion with Karen, I will be happy to be the alternative. Leave that motion, so it's on.
I move to designate Karen McHugh as representative, and Nancy Thompson as alternative representation to serve on the 2025 Electoral Body to elect members to the St. Clair County RISA Board of Education. The Board for their representatives to support candidates Michael Key, Mike Carton, and Jessica Alatati for positions on the St. Clair County Regional Education Service Agency Board of Education for a term of six years.
Close order.
We have a motion, by Mr. Babs, supported by Mr. Buss. Any further discussion? I just want to tell you, they couldn't have two better candidates. No, both of them, Jessica Tati is on the board, another board that they serve on, Michael McCartan is on.
So I think that, does this motion say we have to, we're, we're, we're picking one, not one or the other? Am I reading it wrong?
No, you're supporting, I think it's, it's two different positions.
There's two positions.
Oh, I see, okay.
There's two positions open, and we're just saying yes.
We're just saying yes to both.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Schedule C assignments.
I move to approve the Schedule C assignments for 2025, 26, as presented.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Babs, supported by Mrs. Rosenau, to approve Schedule C assignments for 2026, as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We're giving the 2526 contracts, 12-month salary for central office staff. So we will be in motion to approve these contracts.
I move to approve the contracts for the 2025, 26 school year for Sarah Dovellier, Adam Walsh, Brian Gerstenberger, Mike Cunningham, Laura Hyland, Jennifer Steer, Jennifer Gardner, Laura Nicholson, and Trish Burleson, as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Um, Sarah, on, on this, we have talked about administrative salaries and looking at those. That is not included in this particular one.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about that, and I'm grateful that you brought that up. So because we have two significant openings that will be posted, we've made a concerted effort, not concerted, we've made an intentional effort, and we've accomplished getting every single employee group to county average, if not above county average. The only groups that have not been there are the football line building admin and myself. So in order to post this and attract the most qualified people, I would like to post both positions at county average, which, you know, I've, I've shared that with you. So with your permission and guidance, we have figured that out in with all of the budgeting meetings that we have had, that Adam and I have had. So we want to attract and retain the best people that we can, and that is a major part of it right now. So I don't know what the board's thoughts are, but that would be my recommendation. And I would like to get those postings out by the end of this week. If, but again, I'm listening. Would you like to hear your input if you, if you would prefer?
They would be, those two that you're, we would be posting would be separate contracts at the time that we were to find somebody and negotiate salary. They would then be added to this list. My question was, is, has your, you are also one of the other ones that is not at average. What about Adam and Brian? Are they also at average?
They're, I, these contracts that you just agreed, I actually get them a lot.
Okay. So then, we're not talking about that, because those, I, I think that the agreement is basically that they are going to have to be posted at average, or we will not have any applicants. And that's what we've done for everybody else.
That's, that's what I'm trying to do.
You should be doing, I think that's what we're talking about. But I think right now, the motion that's on the table is for these contracts, as presented to us right now.
Yeah.
So hearing that, we have a motion and support. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. And then I do not believe we need the board action to go ahead and post them.
Nope, I just want to have your feedback.
Because you will have it in the contracts when they're.
Correct. And then you would either approve or not approve. But I did want to bring that to the board's attention to get the, just to hear the discussion on that. So obviously, I'm wanting to do what was aligned with the board's thought. So I appreciate that you brought that up.
Well, and I, I hope that all of the rest of these are also at average rate.
Yeah, yeah. No, they're actually, yes.
Which is what we've done for everybody. So at this point, then, everyone in our district is at average, or will be at average in the county.
Minus, yes. With the adding of the early childhood director position, for me, I would be without that. No, I would be the only, be the only employee, which is fine. Because with that added duty, I will get there. Does that make sense? Yeah, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Student mural proposal for athletic building on football softball field.
I move to approve the student mural proposal for the athletic building and the football softball field, as presented.
Support. We have a motion and support for the mural for the athletic building and football softball fields. Any discussion?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead. Where, where, where's the legal? And which ones? We've got? Well, that is, he wanted to provide the board with options.
Oh, yes.
So I have the actual, he wanted us to pass this around, but he, this, this came about because Mr. Godrie, E.A.J., he's just a wonderful, wonderful student, and he did teacher at that with Sarah Hewlett this past semester, too, because he would like to be an art teacher.
Okay.
Post-secondary plans, and he would be fantastic. But, so he proposed, he scheduled a meeting with me, and proposed these board of redesigns, and he was very, very clear with which ones were his favorite.
Mine, too.
Mine, too. Yeah, that one was mine, too. And I loved it. And he, I said, well, if we're going to bring up something to the board, we have to be very prepared. And therefore, I would like for you to come up with your list of supplies that we will need to purchase, which is the maintenance look like. And he spent several weeks going through and doing all of that. And, and he asked on his behalf if I would share that with you. But I, I just think it's wonderful that he's wanting to do this. But I also know that Leslie actually had already previously had this conversation for a different project. And I think that, if you recall, that information would be valuable, because I think there's a way to incorporate the recommendation with his heart of service project.
Yeah. So yes, I, I too looked at putting a mural on the building and spoke with an exterior painter. His recommendation was to basically have your design put on a piece of wood, whether you want it carved out, or leave it a four-by-eight sheet, but whatever. But basically, put it on the wood and attach the wood to the building, as opposed to painting directly on the building, except, especially with the, the face of the brick over there.
Yeah.
It'd be easier for maintenance, longevity purposes, if, if the student was ever in a position where he couldn't come home to make a repair, we could take it off, repair it, put it back up, replace it, whatever we need to. But I love that this is initiated by, by A.J., and I would love to, to see this happen.
So this will go on the.
It's on the concessions.
Okay. He, what his preference would be, for it to face the road. Although that one, he was driving, he could see this.
Well, and with, and that was one of the things that stood out when I was looking at putting something, you, you drive into the campuses of other districts, and they, they do have something, you know, right, visible with their logo and their mascot on it, and we need that. And it's a great picture backdrop, as he, as he spoke about.
Yeah. And I do think that putting it on a piece of, of, either, or whatever, I think that is the way to go, because what you don't want is for anybody's project that maybe isn't somebody else's project, yours down the, on down the road to become an eyesore. I think it would be a lot easier for maintenance for it to take it down, and maybe the art class can touch it up once, who knows?
Right.
Um, like I think, but, but that's going to be ultimately, I told him, this is how, this is how brain, big takes work. You come up with an idea, you bring it to your governing board, and they make the call. But I, I was very impressed with him, in his, in his.
Could you pencil it, pencil it around?
Absolutely. I put his favorite on the very top.
Yeah.
Oh, I left one. Sorry, guys. I like how he writes, this one is nice. So if they don't have personal favorite on it, it says this one is nice.
And is he prepared to start right away?
Yes, he is, yeah. As soon as we get him with the files, he is prepared.
Okay.
Should the board approve that?
Sarah, when he, can you ask him to, one of the things that when I saw these, because the block M's with the different yellow jackets on them are so cute, too, that a cricket machine where you could put that in, in the block M, whether it's be kind, or stay strong, or you're looking great today, and put them on the back bathroom stalls?
Okay.
Just sounds real positive. And those were just so cute.
They are cute.
That I can see putting your messages in them, and it would be very easy with a cricket to do that. And I've seen them in different places, and it just looks so nice. And it's just a, a constant reminder that.
Yes, I will ask, he would, he probably would want to speak on this, yeah, because we did not discuss that, but I.
They're just so cute.
I think he would really like it.
Oh, for sure. And it could just be the M and the.
Little bees.
The little bees, instead of, you know, background, right? But it would be good.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we have a motion and support for the murals for the athletic softball. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Number one is favorite.
Do you guys like the idea of the word?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Traded lumber, okay.
Yeah, the block is porous.
Yeah.
Yeah, he would have to, yeah, yeah, I've got, pose everything to the players, both ways. It can be primed, it can be sealed before.
It's pulled up as well.
No, brick tends to flake or, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so Superintendent.
So I'm pretty good with my earlier, but I would love to thank Jesse and Janelle. The ceremony was great. That is so much work, and like, I mean, the work that goes into pulling that ceremony off. I know it, the sign of a good event is when the audience has no clue of the legwork that it took. But I know for a fact that they, yeah, it's a lot of work to make something come off well. Listen, they should be recognized for their hard work, because they both played an excellent job. So thank you.
Thank you. We only, we need more tissue. We should have tissue boxes around. Especially Ms. Bergen, I, I mean, it's, I, we stood next to Ms. Bergen, and what a testament to her. I mean, most of the kids wanted to hug her and.
That's why I say it's a special place in my heart. I miss them already.
Yeah.
They do. It's the best thing about being in lunchroom, I get to see them. Is there any cheese?
Anything else?
Oh, gosh.
So, number 12?
I move to go into closed session at 6:46 PM, and sortons with the Open Meetings Act 267, 9276, for the purpose of student discipline hearing, student number 2024-25-1.
Support. Motion and support, which is to Rose, Rose Call.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenau? Uh, myself, yes. Ms. Bobbs?
Yes.
Ms. Drew, is that them?
Yes.
Mr. DeVos?
Hey, you're now in closed session. All right, we are back in open session. And at this point in time, I will turn it back over to you.
So I will read a proposed resolution. Whereas the administration has recommended that a student whose identity is known to the course of the student be expelled for creating a kill list and making threatening written statements. School administrators notify the student's parents of specific charges underlying the discipline recommendation, as well as the date, time, and place of the disciplinary hearing. Pursuant to the request of the student's parents, and then is authorized by Michigan Open Meetings Act, Section 81B, MCL 15.2681B, the disciplinary hearing was conducted in a closed session meeting of the board. The hearing afforded those students and the students' representatives an opportunity to respond to the charges and to present pertinent evidence for the board's consideration. The board has carefully considered all of the evidence produced in this student discipline hearing. Now, therefore, be it resolved that, in preponderance of the evidence established that on or around April 28, 2025, the student created a kill list and made threatening written statements in violation of the student code of conduct. Based on careful consideration of all of the following factors, the board determines that expulsion is warranted. The student's age, the student's disciplinary history, whether the student has a disability, the seriousness of the behavior, whether the behavior posed a safety risk, whether restorative practices are a better option, whether lesser interventions would address the behavior. The student is permanently expelled from the district. During the time of the expulsion, the student may not be on school grounds or attend any functions of the district without prior written approval from an appropriate administrator. The student may petition the board for reinstatement no sooner than December 1, 2025, and possibly be reinstated no sooner than the second semester of the 2025-2026 school year, before the board considers a reinstatement petition. The student must demonstrate successful participation in an appropriate counseling program approved by the board that includes both group and individual counseling. Submit to the board competent and credible evidence from an appropriately licensed and credentialed professional that the student does not pose a risk of harm to the student or to others. Establish that the student has not engaged in conduct during the period of expulsion that may be viewed by the district as detrimental to the student's continued education at the district. Complete to the satisfaction of the board all recommendations contained in any psychological or counseling report, and demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that the student received educational instruction and cooperatively participated in an educational program during the period of expulsion. Consistent with revised school code, Sections 11A and 13111, the board finds the interest of the district or served by this resolution. Administrators are directed and authorized to implement all terms of this resolution, and are delegated all necessary authority to do so. All resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with this resolution are hereby rescinded.
I move to adopt the resolution as read.
Support. We have a motion and support. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed. So that, it is a permanent expulsion right now, but I do want to give you one word of, or a few words of hope. Yesterday, I shook the hand of a sixth-grade boy that had a similar situation to your daughter, that had an expulsion, and came back and graduated. So there is hope. It can happen. You've got a lot of hard work to do, Emily, and we have. You've got a lot of hard work to do, Emily, and we have to, to make sure that we know the seriousness of what happened. The school does have the online, well, help counselor. We, you know, we will have to look into that and the high school counselor usually will support that.
We don't provide educational services to help with expulsion. We do not have an online program.
Correct.
We did last time.
We discussed it was a different situation.
I think the board's intent was to, if there are questions from the parent to help locate the.
Oh, for sure. Yes. Yeah. To be able to find an opportunity. Locating, excellent.
And also with the community mental health, if you need any support in that, you can call the office and I will get, review and make sure that that is something that I can help you to, to do with community mental health, along with the high school counselor or any other school support. So make sure that if you're running into roadblocks, ask for some help. Any other questions that you might have?
Um, is Emily allowed to hear the first stuff from under the locker?
Yep, I can assist with, we're over there and we can grab that. Or any classrooms? Do you want to do that tonight, Jesse, or make arrangements for it?
Yeah, you want to do that tonight?
No, that's fine.
We can take care of that. Do you have anything in the classroom? Any other classroom that you can think of? If you do, let us know and we can gather that for you, but we can take care of the locker. Okay?
This, uh, it'll work. Oh, question, will you allow to get that back or not?
That would be a question for the attorneys. Again, we've copied everything we need. I mean, if we have a, we do.
So with that, make a motion to.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting at 7:53 PM.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Meeting.